Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 26th joint meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, the Blackstone Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, and the Millville Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, I know that we made this meeting date quite a long time ago, so I appreciate the people that could still make it when the time rolled around, and we'll go around the room and introduce ourselves, but I am Jane Reggio, the chairperson of the school committee and a representative from Millville.
I'm Jack Keefe, school committee, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, school committee, Blackstone.
Karen Dernan, school committee, Millville.
Sarah Larkin, school committee, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, school committee, Blackstone.
Aubrey Bono, finance committee, Millville.
Adrian Pettit, finance committee, Millville.
Justin Cole, finance director, Millville.
Joe Reposa, selectmen, Millville.
Ken Tubman, finance committee, Millville.
Jennifer Dean-Wang, selectmen, Millville.
Andrew Allward, selectmen, Millville.
Margot Bick, selectmen, Blackstone.
Matt Errenworth, assistant superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, superintendent.
Thank you, again, thanks everyone for coming. So, when we scheduled this meeting back in, I don't know, June, we had talked about continual meetings to increase discussion, to bring up topics that are relevant to all of the groups and the two neighboring communities, and so I had asked for what people might want to have on the agenda for this meeting, and got a few different things, and one of them, from Mr. Keys, who could not join us today because he's out of town, was to start a conversation about potential renovation of the high school, whether we get an MSBA approval or not, given that certain things probably need to happen at the high school. So, I'm going to kind of turn that over to our new assistant superintendent, Matt, and have him talk a little bit about where we are and maybe some of the things that we need to be considering.
Certainly.
And I don't know, if you want to do all facilities at once, I don't, however you want to do it, but.
Sure. There is a page in your packet giving an update on some of the new occurrences at the various buildings across the district. We discussed this at the school committee meeting, but just to give a quick update on the costs, there were some issues regarding the high school sewer. It was backed up and it was leaching into the athletics field, so there was an issue with the pumps, and the initial visit ended up costing us about $5,000, as you can see, and they are currently, they pulled one of the pumps out, it's a two-pump system, and one always needs to be running, one's a backup. The backup apparently had died some time ago, and just the one pump was running, and then the one pump that was running started jamming up, and they needed to go in, they took the back out pump out, and they are saying that they're in the process now of replacing a transducer. I couldn't tell you what that does, but it makes it run, and that cost is going to be approximately $3,000, and there may be some additional costs that are associated with it as well. All these costs, if you notice on the top, are, they're approximations based on invoices that have been paid and estimates in quotes that we received. So, the $4,767, I believe, was already paid, we haven't been billed entirely for the work to the pump. At AFM JFK, there were some septic issues, both sides needed to be pumped again. The pumping itself cost about $7,000. Someone asked at the last meeting, was that the one that happened earlier in the year? And the answer is no. There was some clogging that occurred, and it needed, that invoice was from August, so that just happened again on both sides. There was some problems with the piping that was causing a backup, there was, they believe there's some cracks that are in some of the lines, and there were small rocks and things that were getting into the plumbing system that was causing the backup, and that second, that second cost associated with the work is for Roto-Rooter went in and they were doing a scope through the lines to identify where the cracks might be and what additional work may still need to take place. So, this may not be the grand total on that project either. With regards to AFM specifically, I'm sure everyone is aware of the mold situation that we had. There were costs associated with the remediation and the dehumidifier rental, we had costs associated with the air quality assessment. Additionally, we needed to purchase our own dehumidifiers that are now constantly running, which I'm sure will do wonders for our electrical bills. And we replaced a number of faculty chairs, the teachers' chairs that got bagged, some of them had mold in them, and we just disposed of them when they opened them and said, ah, there's still some stuff on here, so we weren't going to take the risk they were disposed of and replaced. And there was a significant cost with the custodial overtime. In addition to this, speaking of mold, just while we're giving an update, this morning I was informed that in this building, in room 308, I believe, we discovered that there was some bubbling in the paint, and Scott went up into the ceiling and looked, there was some leaking that had been going on through the ceiling, and water was running down through the wall, and there was a significant amount of mold in that room. We had a service come today, they assessed it. We need to take a sample of the sheetrock and have it get tested according to new standards, even if there's no quote-unquote asbestos in the building, all of the materials that are used in the building now have to be tested before any remediation cuts through the wall. So, we have sampling coming tomorrow morning, they're going to take a sample and hopefully have the results by Friday. That's being expedited, and then when that happens, they're going to probably need to remove a six-by-eight section of the sheetrock, the insulation behind, do some drying and mold remediation. I don't yet have an estimate on the cost of that. I would imagine it's in the $4,000 to $5,000 range, based on some of the other work that the Servpro has done with us, but I can't say for sure. And then we've had the work that had to happen on the burner at AFM, which there was some leaking going on, and the inspector said that we needed to take care of it. It was repaired, that was relatively minor cost, and we did get the certificate saying that it passed inspection at this point. We were particularly concerned because we didn't want to do an extensive amount of work before we went and replaced the entire thing, but this was of an urgent nature because there was some small amounts of gas leaking, so we absorbed the cost to fix those. A high school general repair, I think, is a larger, is a larger scale.
Yeah, I'd be happy to jump in that if you'd like.
Conversation.
Yeah, and I think when we look at the core renovation project, you might be familiar that we had submitted a statement of interest prior that was not accepted into the program, so we revised and resubmitted a statement of interest to have a core renovation done, and so basically it means what it, you know, kind of how it's outlined, which is to really redesign and rebuild and reconstruct the classrooms, hallways, really kind of the academic learning part. And so, it's not a complete, you know, rebuild or a new build, it's just essentially what it is, which is renovating all the main parts of the building. And so, we are waiting to hear back from the Mass School Building Authority if we will be invited to go to the next level of that program, we'll know in December. But with that, we do have two projects currently in the Mass School Building Authority pipeline, JFK, for partial windows, doors, and boilers, and for Millville, we are in the schematic design process for new boilers. And so, I do just want to highlight on the sheet, while we don't see Millville Elementary on here, we certainly have been working very closely with the town on the water tank issue, because you know that that issue has been kind of an ongoing one, and working closely with the administration of the town on the schematic design piece of the boilers. And so, we have that coming up, that project coming up as well. So, I think one of the things that you, certainly isn't new news probably to this team around the table, but is really looking at the facilities challenges that we have. I can share, you know, very candidly, my first couple of months on before Matthew came on board, you know, we were dealing with a lot of facilities issues, and so I've had a chance to, you know, walk roofs, to look at water tanks, to look at leaky pipes, and I learned a lot about those things in my first couple of months. I learned things that, you know, I didn't know were issues were issues, as we continue to delve into some of the facilities challenges. But with that being said, a long-range facilities plan is going to be very important, because one of the things we have taken on with our new administration is, as these issues occur, we are, we are just fixing them, and we're figuring out how to adjust and move money and deal with the budget pieces after the fact, in some cases, because some of these situations, like the high school is a great example, that had to be fixed, or the kids couldn't use the field, we can't have that. And so, you know, we're coming, and I use that as an example because we're coming down to, as, you know, if you've, you know, in homeownership yourself, you know, you know, you can kind of kick the can down the road a little bit for some time, and you can do that deferred maintenance. We, I would say, are kind of on borrowed time to a certain extent with some of this deferred maintenance work that needs to be done, and really can't put off a lot of, a lot of these maintenance issues any longer, hence the example with the high school in the field, as a for instance. And so, you know, I want to put that right out on the table, because we are going to have to take on some of these maintenance issues that we may have been able to kind of defer up till this point. But that being said, through the Mass School Building Authority program, we are trying to get ahead of issues too, and look at projects like the boilers at MES, like the windows, the doors, and boilers at JFK, and of course, really hopeful that our high school will be accepted into that core renovation project, and so we'll know more about that in December.
So, for the JFK windows, all of that was approved at the town meeting?
Yes.
And that's on track?
Yes.
The Millville MSBA has to go to the November meeting?
Yes.
So, how do we get on the warrant for the November special?
I believe this is space holder for you, because it's already been closed. We usually have a BMR, regional district space holder, for your warrant items.
That's great.
Because in, do they have this in theirs?
Yep. In the, in the pack, it was one of the things that I included in the package. I had a conference with MSBA yesterday morning, and there are a couple of steps that we need to move quickly on with regards to the Millville project. One, we can take care of this evening, it's just a signature of compliance, a certification of compliance, and that's from the district and the school committee, but the next step is that the language has to be brought to the town meeting to appropriate a certain amount of funds for the investigation of the project. I believe the amount that we're looking at for the appropriation is probably in the $50,000 range, so, but we'll have that filled out in the, in the language that needs to move forward to the town meeting.
No, I just have a question. In the past, that $50,000 has been paid by the school and then recouped within the MSBA? Isn't that how we've done it in the past? No? Nobody's at the table. No, I'm just trying to think back, because in the past, I remember it's a big amount, and I can remember talking to the townspeople and, you know, at town meeting, and that was always a thing, like, that money goes out, but when it's recouped, it's kind of like, if MSBA is approved and blah, 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 it's worked into that money?
Right.
And then it's recouped back.
For two-thirds of it?
Is there, there is a reimbursement rate?
There is, yeah.
There is a reimbursement rate, and that, that initial, that initial investigation cost does get rolled back into the bottom line of the total, the total project.
Right, and then it comes back.
Costs for part of the reimbursement.
As you know, we're still $200 plus.
Yeah.
Right. So, that's my concern is.
So, asking, yeah, but I think we also need to make sure we have that information, that if there is a reimbursement, if that's coming back, then I think, you know, that needs to be included in the, the information going out to the townspeople.
Absolutely.
So, it doesn't get confused. And maybe have that actual percentage, or how that will work, would be helpful.
Yeah, and so I think that's, I'm really glad you brought that up, because in particular with the core renovation, you know, at the high school, it's a very similar process, and so in that, there is, you know, there is a reimbursement rate that's set, but there are quite a few steps that have to happen upfront, like, right now with the Millville Elementary, we're in the schematic design phase of that particular project, and I don't know if you want to explain what that is, Matt, but the, kind of the new construction or renovation or accelerated repair, which is what they're calling this particular program that we're in for Millville and JFK, it's the accelerated repair, which basically just means that they already have gone out to bid, and they have the contractors, if you will, that can just do the work. That's why it's accelerated, they can just assign to the job and go.
They have OPMs and designers that are on standby.
Owners project managers.
Owners project managers that are on standby to take these projects on specifically. So, once they approve the project on behalf of the, of the towns and the schools, they farm them directly out to these, these companies that are on standby for MSBA, and the work gets turned around as, as indicated at an accelerated rate.
Right, but with, and with, and with the high school, it would be a similar process, but there would be that schematic design phase upfront that would also require, you know, additional fiscal resources from both communities to do that, that work.
So, are you expecting the high school renovation, like, the dollar upfront investment for the schematic design to come in December, because you mentioned December?
No, that's for the, that's for the Millville Elementary project.
We'll get the decision.
In December.
You said the decision for the high school.
Oh, the decision should come in December.
But we don't, we wouldn't know.
If we move to the next level.
That's right. Yep.
Okay, then the investment comes at a later date.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
So, we, we learned, for example, we learned about the JFK acceptance, we're now two years ago.
Yeah.
And then, you know, went to a special town meeting in Blackstone, then went to the Blackstone annual town, so it's kind of, it's, it's, even though it's accelerated?
Yeah. It's accelerated by state terms.
Okay.
It's not a quick, it's, so there will be several town meetings in between the process.
The, just to jump in on that, the JFK project, I met with the designer just recently at the building, and they're ready to submit, it's called the 60% completion of the schematic design, so they have completed 60% of what the total design will be, and they're submitting that to MSBA, and then, I believe, the entire design process will need to be completed by December, and then they'll start working on the actual construction timeline to begin. They need to then procure the, the windows and all of the equipment, and then it will, the work will take place over the summer.
So, it's lengthy. I just, okay, I just need to back it up, I'm sorry, this is my first school committee meeting or anything. So, is the MSBA like a grant kind of funding through the state, or does the school and the towns end up incurring some percentage of the cost, or?
All of the above.
Yeah, yes to both. Yes to both questions.
Yes. Thank you.
So, it's the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Yeah.
That's what MSBA stands for, and they are funded through state dollars and offer the opportunity to school districts that need to do repairs to have some support of that, and to my knowledge, it's a two-thirds, two-thirds?
The reimbursement rate?
Yeah.
Every, every community is different.
Oh.
So, every community has a different rate set, and so, as Jane was saying, they have like a pot of money each year, it's a line item in the budget, and the Mass School Building Authority has a process for, a competitive process for districts to apply to either do core renovation, to do new construction, or to go through this accelerated repair, so that you can preserve your structure and just kind of update it. And so, towns have an opportunity, districts have an opportunity to go in and apply for those, for that grant funding, at a particular reimbursement rate, and they set the rate different for each community, and are very reluctant to release any estimated rate upfront until we're through a certain kind of phase of the project, if you will, and then, then we find out what the reimbursement rate is.
Okay. And so, when does it make it into the budget for, the annual budget for the committee? So, the JFK project was approved, so now it's already been in the budget that was approved earlier, is that?
So, so it's not in the school budget?
Okay.
It's in the town budget.
It's in the, okay.
Yeah. So, for JFK AFM, it would simply be in the Blackstone Capital Projects budget, however they do capital projects. For the Millville one, it would be in the Millville Capital Projects budget when that's set, and if it's the high school or here, then it has to go to both communities.
Okay, then it's under the share agreement, okay.
Right.
Thanks.
And Jane, just, just to let you know that the last big MSBA project that we had a few years ago was 57.74% reimbursement.
Okay.
So, there's a number there, so it's not quite.
Two-thirds, yeah.
It used to be a lot more years ago, I think, but 57.74 was the amount.
And that was the roofing projects that we did?
Yes.
And once you do a, a project, you commit that the facility that you upgraded will be maintained as a school for 25 years. So, because we did roof projects everywhere but here.
Well, until this week. Sorry.
Until, yeah, there you go. Everywhere but here, till now, we have schools that we will have for now 23 years at least.
The roofers couldn't come today because of the rain.
Yes.
But again, just plugging back into that, that long-range facility plan is so important, but, you know, at this point, looking at all the, you know, the times, we've kind of deferred the maintenance off, and we've patched things up, or, you know, maybe have gone a different approach or different way than we should have gone, and we've got to just, we've got to take it on and figure out through a prioritization process what, like, what absolutely has to get done, so that we don't find ourselves in a, in a similar situation we are now.
And, and I, I believe, we've just had brief conversations as a school committee, but if we're not approved for the high school project, there are probably projects within the high school that we
Yes.
need to do. I mean, you know, doors to close off classrooms, not necessarily, but certainly some bathrooms facilities and some boiler facilities and, and things like that, so if it's not approved in December, we probably will need either this group or, you know, a, a small group that has interests from both communities to come together and look and see what we can really do, because we have not done any major maintenance there other than the roof, and we'll do the fire panel, but in a very long time, so.
One of the indicators that the Mass School Building Authority looks at very carefully too, which I think is a huge testament to, to our custodial crew, to be frank, is the actual cleanliness of the building. I know it sounds like a small thing, but that actually is a significant weight on the Mass School Building Authority, because they want it, they want an ROI, right? They want to make sure that where they're investing their resources, the, the communities, the school department will, will really keep up the maintenance of that, and, you know, as, as old as, in particular, the high school is, and some of our other facilities, they are beautifully kept, in terms of the custodial staff doing just a first-rate job to make sure the kids have a very warm, welcoming, clean environment to learn in, and the teachers to work in, so, just a testament to our custodial staff. I feel, you know, on that end of the continuum, we will fare very well, because we do have, as, as old as the facilities are, some of them, and as much updating as they need, the facilities crew does an amazing job keeping them really beautifully put together, and that's important.
Anybody else have any other?
I just have a question on this.
Go ahead.
You have a subtotal, and then you have a total, so I assume that the, the total is the removal of the 73K?
Yeah, yeah. That large portion was covered from the insurance.
Oh, from insurance.
It's being covered through insurance through Blackstone.
And we couldn't get any of those other purchases?
No, there, some prevent, some are preventative and some restore, some other small restorative, the, the insurance, I believe, just covers the specific remediation process.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anyone else with facilities, questions, concerns? Okay. I had asked to place the regional agreement on our agenda today, not so much for a discussion of, you know, changing something or specifically, but more for a global discussion. I know that both towns, at one point over the last year, have talked about the regional agreement in their town meetings. I know that Millville was going to look at some kind of educational review committee, I know that, that Blackstone wanted to just look at the agreement itself, and one of the things that I found when I was reading, that this is a really difficult document to read. I mean, it's clearly written by, you know, legalese, and you need a, a law degree to, to figure out all the wherefores, so, such as, but I wondered if it was not time, since this was the, the body, not the individual people, but the body, the two boards of selectmen and a group of individuals that originally put this agreement together, if this was not a better place for having those discussions, and maybe it just start with a small group of people who are interested, and then bring it back to, to this group to look at, you know, what does this really say? Can we change the, up the language so that it reads easier? Does it still meet the needs of, of the two towns? Does it meet the needs of the district? And just kind of looking at, at maybe cleaning it up a little bit, maybe it, maybe letting it read a little bit better, and then as that discussion continues, if there are some issues that either town or school district want to be, bring forward, that this is a better group than having a school committee subcommittee look at that, because really it would have to go back to both towns anyway, and, you know, it's not, for, for the school district, it's not looking at it necessarily from a cost savings, although there potentially would be some, but maybe looking at it from how do we best educate the students and increase the learning opportunities for every one of the youth in these communities, and, and part of it, we are hand-straped by what some of the things are in this agreement. So, I don't know how people feel about that, I don't even know if people have interest in that, but it was something I wanted to bring to the table to see, you know, what people thought, and whether or not you thought it was a good idea to bring some folks together to just start, even start looking at the language.
Yeah, just a, a thought, while you were talking about it, I, it just popped into my mind that there is some kind of a document that shows what different regional school committees do get reimbursed because of the regionalization.
Mm-hmm.
There's a formula they use, some thing that they use. Some get a lot more, some get a lot less. I guess maybe one way to start is to look at the ones who get a lot more, if it's two schools, and see, because there could be just some tweaking in how we word and how we put things in there that would put us into another category of reimbursement that we could easily implement, and, you know, you just don't know. A lot of times, there's just some little language that shoves you into a bad thing, you know?
Yeah.
And it's something that we could actually change or live without, but it might help with that type of a situation.
Yeah, even, you know, what's possible, what's?
Yeah, take the good one, though.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Get one of the real good reimbursement.
Anyone else have any interest even in looking at it?
I think it's important that we take a look back at the separation of our elementary schools, because that really is the biggest hamstring to the performance of our youngest students, and looking at the MCAS review data that won't be publicly released until tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Millville really is the town that suffers the most because of the division in our elementary schools, and I think that the best way to make our agreement more fair and equitable for everyone is to integrate those schools and get our students together, one, K through five, instead of six to 12. Well, I guess, K through 12.
It wasn't a separation of elementary schools, it was actually joining them into the district. They had always been separate, it's not like they became separate.
Yeah, I understand that, just what I'm, the idea is to bring them together.
Yeah, and it's interesting, because it does, it, as I was, you know, I've been reading through this quite a bit. through this quite a bit, to Jane's point, trying to wrap my head around kind of the legalese of this, but looking at it, you know, it does outline that the two communities will become kind of inclusive and kids will be intermixed at the middle school, sixth through eighth, and the high school. So it's interesting because it's, you know, probably isn't unique in some senses that it defines a particular grade levels, but I think to Jack's point, it also clearly, without separating them out, separates it out, you know, separates it out. And so that's kind of a unique, you know, situation just to look at.
And I think to the, the other reason we want to look at that, I think, you know, every time, in my experience, that we bring up the regional agreement is at budget time and then we're looking for this big cost savings at, in a short amount of time. And the reality is that there's probably not going to be a big cost savings combining the elementary schools because the transportation is always going to be there and you have to get kids across and you want to not keep a kindergarten on the bus for three hours. But it does, if we opened it up at some point, it does allow you to pool resources by grade level and get teachers together by grade level, which in turn has, may, most likely have a positive effect on student learning. And, you know, I think that you can't put a dollar amount on the increase in student learning and that's what we have to sort of think about in this day and age with the level of, you know, curriculum and what we're asking these guys, these youngsters to do. We need to surround them with as many resources as we can and it helps when grade levels are together. So.
Yeah.
We keep looking for that big cost savings as our sole guiding force, but I don't, I think we should shift to student learning.
Yeah. And I'm even, you know, delving, not, again, not in the particular, but just even general. I know the communities have said, well, how do we add a group or how do we get out of this or how do we, and it's like, you know, you give your secondborn child on the fourth month of the fifth year of the twelfth day, and it's just, you know, it's like if you don't know it well, it's a difficult document to use as a document. Mr. Buckley has a question and I will recognize him.
Hi, I'm Michael Buckley, I'm from Blackstone and a former member of Mr. Gus Bullard for a few years. So I'll just give you a short history lesson with why it split the way it was, K six originally and then K five, and then six, seven, eight, and first, and then six, seven, and eight. It's the politics of the time. And there were two political, two issues in the fifty-year history of the district that are probably important to realize. Sixty-seven, when the district was formed, as early as sixty-three, they started to plan a high school in Blackstone. The high school in Blackstone, at the time, whatever the cost would have been, would have been just strictly a very bare bones high school. Probably no science labs, probably no gymnasium, probably no auditorium. But if we brought Millville in, it would allow for what you have in the high school now, which was constructed in sixty-eight through seventy and actually opened in the fall of nineteen seventy, and it was seven through twelve. So then again, so things went along fine for several years there and there was what they called a union, Union Forty-four, which was the Millville Elementary School and the Blackstone Elementary System with a superintendent and the same superintendent happened to be also the regional superintendent. And so he got to go to three school committee meetings instead of one. So you should be very fortunate. So in nineteen eighty, Proposition Two and a Half passed, passed in November, it took effect right away. All these small towns all over the state were forced to really have to make cuts, how to make curricular programs. And the superintendent at the time agreed with the town, both towns, that the schools would eat the cuts. Okay, all the cuts would come out of the schools with the promise that they'd at least investigate K-12 regionalization. And in the spring of eighty-two, both towns approved the expansion to K-12. And what that meant was a, pretty much a huge windfall in reimbursement, to the tune of, we were probably in the, well into the, above seventy-five percent reimbursement from the state for the operation. The, if you go back and you look at Athol, Royalston as the benchmark, because I think at that time, the state was paying their entire school budget based on the, you know, with the demographics and all that stuff. So that's kind of how, you know, the marriage got a second breath. But at that time, there was concern that Millville had a very old school and it was concern from both towns that they would be inheriting this old school if they went through K-12 and they didn't want to have to build another school at that time. This is eighty-two. Now, in eighty-seven or so, and then it opened in eighty-eight, the AF Maloney was built and that was to eliminate the need for the Main Street School where the library is today, the old high school. Subsequently, in ninety-two, the Millville Elementary School opened. So that's kind of what the politics were at the time. So in other words, it was a very interesting group, cross-section of the community, some names that you probably might, may know, may not know, that really did this planning and overwhelmingly passed at both town meetings. But like I said, one of the drawbacks were, you know, Millville would fend for itself elementary-wise and so would Blackstone. And then in turn, you know, a few years ago, they had, you know, looked at combining that. And I think it's, you know, I think it's a lot of work, but I think that it's really something you have to look at. Quite frankly, you know, you almost, I don't know how it worked out with the fourth and fifth up there in Millville, I'm sure it was fine, but it's like, you know, we probably have a little bit too much room.
Yeah, it was nice to have the building full.
Yeah, and that's it, and it was more efficient as well. So that's kind of the brief history, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just for a clarion, firing point, because I, Joe, we had talked about this and I have brought it up at selectman meetings, about an education ad hoc program, committee to look at various issues. It was not just the regional agreement.
No, I knew that.
It was not funding, it was also on the state level, it was getting a group of people in the room together to find out what is the greatest educational need for our town? Is it money? Is it agreement? Is it state level? And then they would set their agenda forward as to what was, prioritize those and then to go forward looking at those. So it was not any one thing in particular, but to look at education globally within Millville's confines and what can we do to help that? So that was what that educational ad hoc committee was to do. And just as a parent, as an educator, as an observer, when you talk about MCAS and you talk about scores throughout the district, you need to also focus upon your special ed department and you also need to look at your RTI model because, quite frankly, there's some improvements that I know at least in the RTI model that could really be made. And I've had lengthy discussions in previous years about this, but I think those are things that you should look at because there's some really great things going on through other districts and it's not happening in ours, at least in my daughter's school.
Jane, can I speak to that?
Of course.
This might be a good opportunity for us to talk a little bit about, so just, so I know we got into a little bit of the weeds on some of the facilities and the renovations and the fiscal pieces, which are hugely important, but somebody asked a question at the district-wide town meeting that really was framed in a way to say, so what, just what is the school department kind of doing? How are we doing in terms of our performance and the investment that we're making in that? And so I think it's really important to just kind of take a few minutes and highlight a little bit about where we are and where we're going. And so, you know, as a district, we are ranked between, you know, student achievement and growth, kind of the lower middle of the pack out of two-hundred-and-ninety comprehensive districts. The last time they were ranked, we were one-fifteen. So certainly not, you know, kind of at the bottom, but nowhere near where we should be. In particular, when you visit our classrooms and you talk to our kids, we have the most well-behaved, brilliant children I have had the pleasure of experiencing and interacting with, just to put that right out front. Now that school's been in session for, you know, for quite some time and have had a chance to visit every single one of our schools multiple times in the classroom with children. And so I think that's important to note. We also have a very hard-working teaching staff that is very excited and eager to take on the challenge of taking our kids to that next level. And so, as Jack mentioned, tomorrow, the Department of Education will be lifting the, kind of the embargo, if you will, on our student performance data from the spring. And so you'll get a strong sense in terms of where we are and how we're performing as a district. But with that, I think it's really important to mention where we're going. And so as you talk about RTI, which is response to intervention, and those are either academic interventions or behavioral interventions we put in place for students that need them, I think it's important to note that while that does need and warrants a deep look, our core programming needs to be addressed first and foremost. And what I mean by that is from a curriculum standpoint, so that's like what we're teaching our kids, there is a significant amount of work that needs to be done there. We have state standards and science in particular that we have no curriculum. And by that, I mean we have nothing written that lays out.
Also new.
A scope and sequence.
Goodness.
Two years ago.
Yeah. They're new, everyone's implementing them.
Well, so most places FYI have written their curriculum and they're piloting resources. We haven't written a curriculum.
Okay.
And so, and I'm being very bold, I'm putting it all out there because science is a really important subject for our students that needs to be addressed almost immediately. But also with that, we want students engaged in science. We want them in labs, we want them using technology. And those are resources that they deserve to have and that they need to have in front of them, that we have to figure out as a team how we're going to address those needs fiscally to make sure we can put those materials in the hands of our teachers and kids. But so, before we start looking at the intervention materials, we've got to fix our core. It's like the hub of the wheel. And so we've got to look deeply at the math materials we have for kids, the literacy materials we have for kids. We have teachers that have on their own put together incredible leveled libraries of books for kids, but I want to underscore on their own, that shouldn't be coming out of the pockets of teachers. That's a problem. We need to be prioritizing those resources, fiscal resources, so that teachers have the materials they need, so kids have the materials in their hands. And so we've got to take a deep look at English, language arts, we've got to look at mathematics, K-12. And I will argue probably the heftiest, to loop back to it, price tag that there will be is in science because of the nature of the programming that the kids need to have. It isn't just an experiment, you know, once every couple of weeks or once a month or once a unit. These kids should be engaged in science labs every single day. And so we have a lot of work to do around the curriculum piece first. The second part is looking at how we're delivering that learning and that teaching to our kids. And so we talk about instruction and doing a lot of work around helping teachers improve their craft. And there's a very particular, you know, way that we need to do that. Teachers need more time to work together. Teachers should have support from other teachers through coaching and really have that person to kind of lean on, to look at lesson plans with, to get feedback from. That's not evaluative, that's not from their principal, but from their colleagues. And so, teaching is a practice, it's like law and medicine, but for some reason, we don't give it the same kind of elevation that law and medicine have and it should because there's nothing more important than working with our youth. And so teachers need the time and the support to be able to improve their craft. Third area is looking at students as a whole and the non-academic issues that are facing our children. And I think everyone in this room would certainly agree that the mental health issues in our society, culture in general are significant. And our kids require a lot of support, their families require a lot of support. Our teachers need support in reaching our students. I have used the expression that you can't teach a kid until you can reach a kid. And you got to get those non-academic barriers out of the way so that the teachers can be effective with the students. We need to do a lot of work in that area. And the last part, and I'm going to say this very boldly at this table, we have got to get these two communities together. We've got to be focused on one vision, one mission, one set of core values, and it's up to every single one of us to hold each other accountable to that vision, mission, and core values, to make sure that we're leading collaboratively, collectively, and from the school department perspective, making sure that we are keeping kids first. And so as a district, that's what we're focused on. We're focused on the what, which is the curriculum, the how, which is the instruction, the whole child, those social-emotional development pieces and the social-emotional needs, and bringing our two communities together into a district of one. And so I just wanted to forecast, Jane, thank you for the time for that, but just to really articulate where it is we're going as a school department and how we're all plugged into that.
So I'll let you keep forecasting and go into the long-range.
Budget strategy.
Budget strategy.
Yeah, and so everything I just spoke about, you know, we have to make sure that our academic plan, our long-range improvement plan for the district, our accountability plan, we're still working through that, has a fiscal plan that matches it, right? So if we are prioritizing certain areas like curriculum, for instance, and say, you know, science because it was mentioned, then we need to make sure that we have a standing-line item for curriculum renewal and curriculum supports. If we're looking at giving teachers more time for common planning with their colleagues, for coaching and support, well, we have to prioritize that. How do we build into the budget more time for teachers? How do we put in place instructional coaches in our building to help support our teachers and work with our teachers in a very safe, non-evaluative, collaborative way? And so, you know, we need to come together to look at how we're going to put those pieces in place. We went through a difficult, I'll say this very respectfully to the folks around this table, you went through a very difficult budget season of which I had to watch from afar, knowing that I was coming into that and trying to support best I could that process from afar, but, you know, and I will say this very frankly, there's nothing left to cut. And so we went through a one-point-five million dollar cut of a twenty-two-point-six million dollar budget. Of that budget, eight and a half million comes from Blackstone, two-point-nine comes from Millville, and an eleven and a half comes from the state. And so I'm really concerned about looking forward and seeing gaps in programming for kids like science, like ELA, like math, never mind the fact that we don't have summer programming for kids. I mean, you know, other than if it's required on an individual education plan for a student with special needs, we don't offer our children anything in the summer. And this, you know, this ten-month calendar is way out of date, we know, kids need to be learning year-round. And so we don't, you know, never mind getting to extracurriculars like that. And so as I look forward into the future and looking at the curriculum gaps we have, looking at the instructional gaps we have and the needs of our teachers, which as far as I'm concerned, comes right up there with the needs of our kids, we have some budgetary challenges that we are going to have to strategize around this table to figure out. Because we can't say, here's our improvement plan as a district, right? We all buy into it, we all accept it, we all agree it, we're behind it, we're ready to lead it, and then say, oh, well, I didn't know that we had to fund that too, right? Not that we would ever say that. But there's got to be a way for us to figure this out collaboratively where, you know, there's not this push and pull between the two communities and ultimately the students get caught in the middle or the teachers get caught in the middle. And I know that's never anybody's intention, but it just inadvertently happens by nature of that dynamic. And so we are going to need to come up with some long-range budget strategy for this. And so I would argue that the school department will be ready sooner than later with our improvement strategy and starting to develop our plan. We've already identified those four bucket areas and can speak at some of the higher levels what we need. We haven't put dollars to all of those items yet, but my sense is sooner than later, we'll be able to do that and start that dialogue between, you know, these groups of individuals, of leaders and others that aren't here, so we can start setting out what that budget, you know, asks and that trajectory or process will be to get us there.
Dr. DeFalco and members of all the committees who are sitting at this table, I think you're preaching somewhat to the choir here, we all understand that, but please understand our side as well, especially the Millville side, who we have almost, there is no more to cut in Millville either.
Right.
But we've been asking for a comprehensive plan for years, years. And the first three-year plan we got, the first year of that plan, which was, we were estimated at a three percent increase, went to an eighteen percent increase. So what we really need from you as an administrator and your business manager and all of us, I think we all need to work on it, is you're absolutely right, some sort of plan with real knowledge. numbers, because I know our towns don't want our students to suffer. Whether or not we have children in the district, or whether or not we've been there, done that, these are all things I've heard from people in our towns, but nobody, our children are our future, and we all know that. So if we have a real number that we can come to, to our, with, to our towns and say, this is a projection, it could shift somewhat, not 15%, but minimally-
Sure.
...where we can say, these are the funds we need to make this happen for our students, and they can vote on something that's actually-
Real.
Real? Thank you. I think that'll go a long way with not only the townspeople, but with the members of the boards who sit at this table, so we can have the dialogue we need to move forward. I think, and I'm not casting blame, I think Mike said it very well, the division started many years ago with some political debate or disagreement, or whatever it may be, but we do need to come together as a group, as a region, and educate our students. But we need to do it with some real, real numbers that we can bring to our communities and have them vote on something that isn't going to change so dramatically.
And I absolutely appreciate that, and I do want to just share that, you know, your challenges are our challenges, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
And so we are all leaders in this same community, in this same bucket, if you will, trying to do the same level of work. So I want you to know that that statement is really important to us, because Millville and, that's who makes us, right? Millville and Blackstone.
Absolutely.
So we understand that completely.
And we've got a 50-year history. We need to move on.
Yeah.
We need to keep this ball rolling.
One of the things in terms, you mentioned communication, I think that's really important. Tomorrow, again, the Department of Ed's going to lift that embargo on the data so we can share it. We are going to send out a blast to the entire school community of our data, where we are, all of our numbers. And after we review the data publicly at school committee, we are going to do community sessions.
Beautiful.
Libraries, we're going to be looking for places to hold these meetings. We'd be happy to do them at a board of selectmen meeting, if that's what folks, wherever people go is where we want to be. We want to share with our communities how our schools are doing. That question that gentleman asked at the district-wide meeting has sat with me since. And it's so important that everybody understands just how we are performing, what is the academic plan, and what's the fiscal need that drives that, so we can put, because you're right, we need to put that in front of-
Yeah. And I'm very optimistic, because it's great to hear that part of the plan is to work on these things. It's rather disheartening to know that for two or however many years we haven't, with the new standards that have come out, that we haven't even begun to look at curriculum yet. And again, that's not casting any aspersions on anybody. I understand the constraints we're all under. So that, you know, that's exciting news. These are things that we do need to build. And that's the kind of thing that, when presented to a town, something that's tangible, that they can understand, it's a lot easier to get funding for or with.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate you letting me speak.
Anyone else have any?
I have a question. So that resonated with me at the town meeting, also the piece about how much another woman stood up and talked about individual, like, spend per student in the districts and compared ours as pretty low compared to some of the choices that our students have, especially going into the high school grades. And so, from what I've heard tonight, we've been lacking on maintenance or kicking the can down the road maintenance-wise. I don't know if that also means we haven't been upkeeping some of these things that we would, that would have kind of prevented some of what happened with the sewer and septic, but, so it sounds like maintenance, curriculum. And then my other kind of question is, what about funding the pension obligation that the school district has? So, I mean, I think that's not something to continue to also defer. And I agree, I think a real number is going to be helpful. It may be a shock, but I also agree, I think that the townspeople really do support the school system, but we need to be, maybe that's what they need to see, is really, the reality check of what's been going on and what kind of the, what your long-range plan is.
We have continually had the discussion about the OPEB and the pension liability, and, you know, quite frankly, as the town of Millville, you know, has set aside, because they did a special warrant item for specifically that, the school district, anytime we've added it, it's one of those things that's kind of easy to go. Do you take away funding a pension, or do you, you know, put a teacher in front of the students? You know, it's just really easy, unfortunately, easy thing to take out of a budget. And I think until perhaps both towns, with the school, come together and say, we need this warrant item, that, you know, kind of a third bucket that's a non-touchable bucket, it's just going to continue to be easy to continue to take from or to not add in.
At what point does it not become an option anymore? I guess, like, do we know what the liability is? Like, what the, you know, I guess, kind of the financial metrics around that?
We know, or we did know, or our former, but I don't know if-
Doesn't the state have a timeline?
What?
Doesn't the state have a timeline for that?
They do.
I don't off the top of my head know what it is.
Suggested. Suggested timeline?
They do.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it just seems like the most difficult part of all this will be prioritizing, right? And not just prioritizing in the utopian view of, here's everything we want for our children, but a matter of putting dollars, assigning that to each one of the priorities, and recognizing that they're, that we're limited. And so, regardless of what that full bucket number is for everything we want to get done, how do we shift priorities? How do we look at some of the things maybe that we can take from here and bring over here to highlight one of our, you know, one of our upcoming priorities? And then doing that within a timely manner so that we can get in front of it. I think on our last meeting with the state members as well, I think we talked about, like, an October timeframe of having a first cut at the school budget for the following year, so it's now. You know, how do we, how do we begin to tackle that and figure out what comes for this year, and then two years from now, and three years from now, so that we can try to work with it within our own means?
And so I think where we're, I think where we're close is having the improvement strategy in place. And so that just took a little bit of time, because, you know, we've had a lot of conversations with various community members, community leaders, teachers, administrators, families. And so, there was almost like this kind of data collection that had to be done before you could kind of get to the strategy. We also had an interesting situation where we came into a new fiscal year without a budget, which we know, you know, we, our business manager left, a new special ed director, and so, you know, there was a lot of kind of change, and things had to get stabilized and in place, and the school committee did a great job of, you know, collaborating and really helping that all get situated as quickly as possible and firmly in place, so that we could get to the strategy and then the, you know, and then the budget. And so I would, I would say we're very close to having a improvement strategy tightly in place, and that's important, because that has to drive the budgetary pieces. But as, as time is moving forward, I'll tell you, the last group that I'm going to be meeting with formally, who is probably the most important group, are the actual kids. Over the next few weeks, we're going to have small focus groups with all those students to talk about their experiences, like what's important to them, what's working for them, what's not, what do they need more of, less of. And I'll be doing those in each one of the buildings. But as time is moving forward, and as we're meeting with teachers and looking at instructional, you know, kind of design of programs, and looking at curriculum and materials, and now our MCAS data, which is a data point, and it's, you know, not the only one, but it's an important one to look at, it's starting to become very evident what the needs are and why our kids are either reading at the level that they're reading at, or mathematically where they are, or from a science perspective, why we are nowhere near where we need to be. Well, we know that. We have no curriculum, we have no resources, teachers don't have what they need. And so, that strategy is becoming, I think, quicker into place than not, because all of those pieces are becoming very evident and clear as to how to reprioritize, because we know that. And so one of the things we've been talking about is how do we use better the resources we have, making sure that we've got all of those aligned, and then what are the opportunities outside of the local budget that we can, that we can go after? Grant opportunities. We were on a call for the high school today to look at a particular, you know, opportunity that has availed itself to us. And so, you know, I think we also have to look at multiple funding streams, revenue streams, and not just keep going back to local. There are many opportunities out there to do some of the work we want to do.
I also think a piece for you is education of the general public. There are people who do not have children in the school system yet, they or their children have left. Education is not the same education that some of our voters experienced, the mental health, the special needs. I mean, these are years ago, and I'd like to think it was only a few years ago, but these, you know, there was the resource rooms, there was the outplacement for schools. We're taking, there is therapeutic, there is mental health issues being dealt with in the classroom, that the school does not look like a row of seats. That is not what we're doing anymore. And people say, well, it was fine for me, but the standards have increased. The rigor, the what you want your kids leaving, what their skill set is to be when they leave as seniors is different than what it was, you know, 10, 20, 40, 50, 60 years ago. And those are the voters at town meeting. So I think a piece of it is what is going on in the school, but not just that, but why is it going on? So you can put out videos of, oh, they made birdhouses. Wonderful. I know what it's all about. You know, my child's in that, I'm in the field, I get it. But why is that important? So I think sometimes tagging on the why are we doing this type of programming, it's not fun, I mean, it's fun, but it's, but it has a purpose. And I think educating the general public of why schools are operating the way they do, what we're producing as 12th graders, and how that looks from K through 12, a continuum of those skills, and I think that's important, and that's, that's at least in Millville, I can say, is your largest piece of the people who say, I'm not funding education, because I got through with enough.
That goes back to your piece, Dr. DeFalco, with that outreach-
Yes.
...that you spoke of.
If you tell me where those people are, I will find them.
I'll give you a-
[laughing]
I'll give you a voter list. I'll get that list for you.
We will meet people, coffee shops, diners, wherever, to give them what they need to understand our strategy, our plan, and the needs of our, because you're right, it is very different.
No, I mean, it's great that, you know, Tim and Jess do a great job putting that out there, but why are we doing it? And even, you know, I think that's important.
Can argue the what, but not always the why.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thanks, Jen.
Great point.
Anyone?
Light bulb just went off, but-
Jane, to go back to your initial comment about this agreement, I think I would be highly supportive of this whole table really understanding what this agreement says, because it sounds, it sounds like that's like step one, right? We're talking all these other initiatives, but if we don't even know what our own agreement is, then I think there's a problem there. So I'm in support of coming up with a plan to do that.
That would be great. Does anybody have anything else that they wanted to bring to the table before we talk about future? I do know that we have many guests here today. We did not put a public forum, but we certainly welcome it. Is there anybody who has joined us who would like to share anything today?
I just have one question to Dr. DeFalco. Class sizes, how do they look, especially in the elementary?
So they are as, probably, from what I have been able to find in my own conversations and research, they are probably more equitable now than they've ever been. However, there are still key grade levels in both schools where they are a little larger than we would like. And so, you know, for JFK, AFM, it's grade two and four. They're still a little bit higher than we would like. The challenge we have at Millville in particular is the singleton, you know, grades, where we're at, you know, 28, 29. Well, nobody wants 28, 29, but with two teachers, you have 15 and 14. And, you know, we all would probably think that's great, but that's, that's not a cost-effective or efficient way to do business. I will tell you what the research says for anyone that, you may probably know this, but the research is very clear, and there is a significant body of research on this. Class size is irrelevant until you hit 33 to 35 kids. Now, as a classroom teacher, a middle school and elementary school teacher before administration, I would not want 33, you know, 4th graders in my class, so I understand that. But in terms of impact on student learning and achievement, it doesn't have any bearing until you get to that number. But right now, both the complex and Millville Elementary are about as close as they've ever been.
So you're saying high 20s in the year?
Depends. So some are like 20, 21, and then in certain grades, 28, 29.
Anyone have another topic that was unforeseen and not anticipated that they would like to bring up?
Jane, with respect to the people who are in our audience today, I think it's very important that we ask our legislators, whoever is going to be in those offices, to really, I mean, Chapter 70 has to be looked at. The formula is outdated. The state has admitted that it's outdated. It, I know there's an issue with funding it if you change it, but we, these small towns cannot survive unless Chapter 70 is looked at. And so, I see you out there. Please, I mean, we, you know, we reach out to our legislators, but that's the key. I mean, that's, that's the number that is way off for these small towns, and we need help from the state and above, if that's what it takes. But we, it's, we're all disheartened when we have to go to Blackstone or Millville and kind of beg for the money when we know that Chapter 70 is a hotness.
Broken.
And if you want to throw in some transportation money while you're out, feel free.
Or circuit breaker.
That is also underfunded.
You want to enforce the laws you've passed.
Yes.
Thank you, Jen.
Anyone else?
Just as part of the regional agreement review, were you going to set up like a subcommittee of this?
Well, I had asked that question, and we never really came to-
Yeah, sorry.
...an answer. You know, I don't, I don't, you know, do we all go back and read it and then come with things that we want to define or, or, you know, clarify? I don't know. That seems like a very burdensome process, where I think if, you know, two or three people were willing to kind of sit down and read through and recommend some, at least, sections to look at, or words to, you know, take out the, wherefore art thou?
You know that any changes will have to be approved by both counties.
Correct. That's why, that, so, so that's why I think this is a group that makes sense, because it's got to go back to the towns, it's got to go back to a town meeting, even if we just changed the word "the" in, you know, in some places. But I think if we had a document that went back to the towns from the towns, as opposed to from the school, here's another thing the school needs from us, but, you know, from the towns, that was language people could read, so that they knew, you know, what they were reading and what that meant, and what that implication was for their community, I think we would have a better opportunity to clean it up. Again, if we want substantive changes, like, you know, K through 5 regional, I mean, that may be a different process and a different discussion, but I think if nothing else we start with, can we even all read it?
Is there anyone who has familiarity with this document in present day? Like-
I've read it plenty of times.
I've read it.
I've read it lots of times.
But, but, who, who was he?
It was Harold, right?
It was Harold Gould was the attorney.
We interviewed him by Harold Gould, the longtime former district council.
Yeah.
Been amended many times, obviously. But I would like to, but I work with anyone that wants to look through it. But I would like to, but I'll work with anyone that wants to look through it.
But so, I would say if there were a group of people who had interest in that, and I can certainly kind of put it out there to the people who didn't make it today, and community members as well, I'm not, you know, trying to exclude anybody. I just think maybe if there were a small group and they wanted to look at it from that perspective and then come back to this group, if this group decides that we ought to come back to the table again. I don't know. But I'm one person, so what do other people think?
I agree. I mean, I think it, we can understand it, and I think it's just important to have those conversations when we're not under pressure regarding something within it. And I think when we, you know, you can talk much easier, you're calmer, and you can get to where you need to be when there's no, you're not intending to change something to meet some need.
Right. Well, and even, you know, even sections that say before 1987, well, it's like, okay, yes, we need the historical perspective on that, but does it really still need to be in the agreement? You know, it's not before 1987 anymore. It's long past 1987. So...
And are you looking to change the way that the elementary school is set up? I know that there's been regionalization.
Are you asking me personally or the school?
The school committee? I mean, I know there's been discussion, as a parent who is just getting involved in this part of town politics, whatever you want to call it, I know there's been discussions in the past, and I don't know if that's being brought up again, or is that completely separate from looking at this?
So, there is no longer a subcommittee that's specifically looking at the agreement from that perspective.
Okay.
So, we had a school committee, subcommittee, we had several, one that brought a motion before the towns that did not pass, passed in one town, not in the other. And then, we tried to continue that discussion, and we chose at the time to not continue it. There just really wasn't a lot of support of people willing to kind of take on those discussions. And so, at this time, there's not a subcommittee looking at that specific thing. However, having said that, I think if you ask the school committee, and if we went around the circle and kind of took an informal vote from our discussions that we've had about strategic planning and about long-range planning and about the best environment for all of the youth, that probably we would be in agreement that we really need to look at combining the elementary into one. We are a regional school, to Jen's point, we already are a regional school district. We just educate our elementary students separately. And I think if you ask the group, the preference would be to educate them as a group. But is there a push to do that? No. Is there a committee to do that? No. If this table thinks that that's a direction that we ought to go, I have heard from some parents who would like to see that come into the discussion again. You know, we certainly can do that. But that's not where I was going with this. Where I was going with this was, can we have a document we can read and understand, and then, look at the specifics of it and see what we...
Has your, has the district attorney looked, your dis -- not the district attorney? The district's attorney looked at this document to say if there could be any cleanup? Because there's, some has a date, because it's a five-year standard. So, you need some of those. And I understand some of the cleanup pieces, because of the high school and the middle school and those dates. But has your attorney looked, has the district's attorney looked at this to say, you know, "We can simplify it, we can do this," or "Keep the spirit of what's in there, but get rid of..." I don't want to go change in legalese, to be quite frank. That's outside of my professional or comfort level. So, if you're looking at cleaning it up and clearing it up, I really think it should go to the attorney, and they should kind of give that, because they're going to review it later and they're going to hack it up. So, why not just let the, whatever we put forth, they're going to revise. So, why not have them look at it and to clean it up? Just my suggestion.
And also, just from, I don't know if the woman's still sitting at the end. She had to take off. But just from a more of a professional expertise perspective, hiring someone who's more familiar with the way that the state reimburses and the language that are in the agreements for the towns that seem to be able to maximize their reimbursement, I mean, it may be a well worthwhile investment to hire somebody from that perspective, you know?
You say the word "hire," and I go, huh huh.
Sometimes you've got to spend money, you know?
That's set by the Commonwealth.
They are.
Based on demographics.
And the, you know, the additional contribution and so forth is rate is on a capita basis, which is how many kids are in Millville, this is how many kids are in Blackstone.
So, the maximizing the...
The district agreement does not set any reimbursement.
Okay.
It doesn't set any issues like that. The Commonwealth does.
States had set.
Legislation in Chapter 70.
Demographics.
I put out there in my work with attorneys from a school district level, most attorneys are going to want a basis of what you'd like them to be looking at. We can give an agreement to an attorney, and they're going to charge us by the hour to decide what they want to suggest to you, which may have nothing to do with what you'd like to suggest. I think if we have some idea of what we'd like to do with the wording, or just look at it and say, "These are the areas that we'd like to identify, that we could potentially change," that would be helpful moving into any type of counsel looking at the document that typically is a finalized, is a final step, because then they'll take what we want to do with the document, and they'll tweak it and make sure that it's worded appropriately and matches our liking as well.
So, maybe we send an email out to the full group and just see if we get like...
Yeah.
Ideally, we kind of maybe could get someone from each...
Each of the entities.
Yes, exactly.
I agree. I can do that. And as far as bringing the groups together, we're down to one town, right?
We're at Blackstone.
Not quite. Oh, he just doesn't want to sit at the table.
I agree.
That's okay. Do we want to continue these discussions, this table, this bringing together? How often?
Well, my question would be, when's your next turning point? Is it your budget? Is it your plan? When's your next turning point?
So, that is a really good question. I think my sense would be that by December, we would be able to put some solid numbers. Matt's sweating a little bit now, but I think by...
The new year?
Perhaps, yeah, maybe just before or just after, right somewhere in that window.
December 25th, they'll all be here. I'll know what to ask for for Christmas.
A budget.
Lots of money.
Yeah, I think somewhere in that December, January window, maybe just after or just before, something like that.
Makes sense, just before.
And I want to speak to the committee in terms of...
Well, we had, when we had a workshop where we kind of set goals, and this was one of the goals that we discussed, to try to have more open communication, to try to let everybody be on the same page and know our thought processes. And so, we had talked about quarterly, which, I mean, would do that if we're looking at, you know, kind of January, March, June, whatever, October, so...
What night do you meet?
Monday night.
You meet Monday? So, Wednesday seems to be a good night.
Wednesdays?
Based on their Blackstone meetings and Millville meetings.
Actually, from a financial perspective, shortly into January, makes sense, because then we could, if there's any questions regarding the current budget, we'd be just past the first half of the fiscal year, which gives some opportunity to analyze the numbers as they've been going for this fiscal year, and start applying them to what we're looking at for budgeting.
So, January 9th is a Wednesday.
That'd be our meeting, right?
Is that when your meeting?
Yep, second Wednesday.
Unless we do a Monday, Tuesday, which is off from Blackstone or Millville Selectment meetings. We have to look at that.
The third Wednesday is the 16th.
Because our thing, are you guys keeping Wednesday evenings?
I mentioned that second week into the...
January 16th?
That's in between what we...
And that would mean we'd be going, yeah.
Three weeks in a row.
Oh, it's budget season, there's no weeks off. No weeks off.
Oh, we already have two scheduled.
From then until August.
Well, this year.
So, January 16th?
January 16th?
Go for it, a Wednesday? It is a Wednesday.
Six o'clock, still good or too early, or?
Six o'clock is good.
I like it.
Six o'clock is good.
Okay. Here works?
Yes.
So, I will send out a note to folks to see if they have interest in discussing agreement, and I will send out a notice that we plan to meet on this, the...
16th.
Okay, I wrote 6:00 PM and didn't write a date. January 16th, and if anybody has something specific they would like to get on the agenda as we get closer, just please let me know. Anybody else? Anyone else? All right, I thank everybody for their time, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for your time.